Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the September tenth, two thousand and twelve, meeting of the Yukon Planning Commission. Tonight, if you will join us by standing, we'll have the invocation by Commissioner Doggett, and the flag salute by Commissioner Davis.
Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion. Give us grace as we make decisions that affect our community. Remind us that what we do here today is in your glory and for the service of the citizens of Yukon. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to serve with these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Here.
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 Commissioner Beaver is absent tonight. He has another engagement. Item one is approval of the minutes of the August thirteenth meeting. Have any corrections or additions, or someone might have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the minutes of last meeting.
Have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion among the committees? Call and roll, please.
Yes.
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 Next is visitors. If there's anyone here that would like to address the council, the commissioners about a non-agended item, would like for you to step forward and do it at this time. Glad to see City Councilman Opitz here with us tonight. Thank you for coming. Thank you. Item three is consider a lot split for John A. Henry and Company for Block B, Track B of the Yukon Hills addition. Someone here to speak to that tonight, please. You state your name.
Yes, Jeff Norman for the applicant, John A. Henry and Company. We've proposed a lot split, Lot B, Track B, along Cornwall. This was, is the site, as you know, situated roughly between the new building we built several years ago with the donut shop and Red Dirt Guitars, all the way to Bass Avenue, in connection with, in connection with this lot split. We're going to sell this lot to a financial institution who is then committed to come in and improve Bass Avenue as a city street. It's been, it was dedicated years and years ago, but it's never been accepted by the city or finished, so that will be part and parcel of their building permit application.
Do they intend to put it all the way across to the housing addition?
Not at this time.
Just back to where it's?
Yeah, no, it will go back to the depth of the lot. And then, the companion item that you see is a curb cut. Because of the proximity of Bass and the way that their site lays out, we are going to put a thirty-five-foot driveway on the southern boundary of their property, which will provide access to their site and to our shopping center with internal cross-access, which will flow between our shopping center and their bank site, and then on out to Bass, so the traffic will be able to go without getting out on the, on the street. That's, that's essentially the proposal.
Did you read the staff report that you, if we were to approve this, it would have to be with the condition that you would have to come back and rezone it from C four to C three?
Yes, sir. And we've already taken the initial steps to provide the city with the appropriate notice lists and everything. We're prepared to do that, and hopefully, we'll be here in October at the city council meeting for that. And it will be, I believe it will be, I would consider down zoning from where we are to the new zoning. We'll go from C four to C three, I believe.
Yes, it'd be a down zone. Well, I'm happy to see that Bass Avenue finally will get something done with it. So it will be able, they will be able to run from that little strip shopping center into yours and everything right through there?
Yeah, the traffic can internally circulate all the way from Bass through the bank site into our shopping center, and I guess, you know, ultimately, that traffic can go from Bass on to Turtle Creek, so, you know, there'll be internal circulation. Right now, that's the, the extension of Bass, as you asked. We wouldn't, we wouldn't go beyond the depth of the site for this group development.
I noticed you're not gonna take that whole lot, or you're not gonna sell the whole piece? You'll have a piece there in back?
There'll be a remnant, which, the way this is gonna work out, as you guys know, there's a pretty significant topography issue there. There's a large hill, and we're probably gonna use a lot of that land as a transition between the bank site and what we hope to at some point ultimately develop is a connection of our shopping center further to the north at some point, next to Cross Trainers Fitness and on north, but, you know, so far, we haven't had a cause to do that, but we could potentially develop another large junior anchor type tenant back behind this development. And then, the, the, the road will be a permanent easement between us and the bank, the curb cut, and that driveway will be a thirty-five-foot permanent easement, which we're gonna record of record, and will be maintained by both parties.
Any of the commissioners have questions for this gentleman? Not me. Commissioner Davis? Hurley? Do you have anything?
No.
Then, I'm ready for a motion, if someone here to give it.
Mr. Chairman, in the case of the application for a lot split for Block B, Track B of the Yukon Hills addition, second section submitted by John A. Henry, we've read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with staff findings, including all legal descriptions cited in the staff report. I move this item be approved with the following condition, and the condition is the applicant must submit an application for rezoning to bank property from C four to C three in order to bring the, created lot into zoning compliance. Said zoning application must be submitted and approved prior to issuance of a building permit for the property.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any further discussion? Anybody in the audience like to say anything? Call and roll, please. Yes.
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 Item four is, as he said, the companion item of a curb cut for John A. Henry for the curb cut onto Cornwall Drive for the new road to access the bank property. Any discussions, or anybody have any questions about that? Hey, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, in the case of a request by John A. Henry to review a proposed driveway location for the Yukon Hills Shopping Center commercial development, we've read the staff report, received testimony at the public hearing, find ourselves in agreement with staff findings, including all plans and attachments. Move this item be approved with the following findings. Finding number one, the distance between the proposed drive and the main shopping center drive located to the south is approved with a variance to section two point oh six point A of the City of Yukon subdivision regulations. And finding number two, the distance between the proposed drive and the intersection of Bass Avenue and Cornwall Avenue is sufficient for the reasons stated in the staff report, and as permitted by section two point oh six point G of the City of Yukon subdivision regulations.
We have a second for that?
Second.
Motion and a second? Is there any further discussion? Anybody have any questions? Call and roll, please.
Yes.
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 Okay, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
Item five is consider a conditional use permit for Five Star Storage. Mr. Opitz?
I'm Rick Opitz with Five Star Storage, seventeen seventy-seven West Vandement, Yukon, Oklahoma, and I'm really here just to answer any questions that you might have. I wanna give you a little bit of history first. We have a conditional use permit there now at the moment, and we're just trying to expand that to store porta potties. And a company named Royal Flush stores with us. They also rent some office space from us, and they employ about five to six people. And on the west side of the lot, they store their trucks and their clean and empty pots, and the west side actually gives them a little bit of advertisement because it's next to I forty. But only the new pots are actually being stored there. And on the north area, that's already been gravelled, so there won't be any abnormal dust. These pots are lightweight, and they can be handled, and, so they can be handled and loaded easily. There's also a buffer zone of trees that I left when I was building Five Star Storage to the north, on the very north boundary, so that I wouldn't disturb the homeowners while I was building Five Star Storage, and we left those trees there. I don't know if you have a, do you have a photograph of that in front of you? Can I approach?
Yeah.
This one, to kind of show you, your Five Star Storage, of course. So we did that on purpose, and we didn't bother, and, so we left that there, so those trees that also, that blinds, spot.
So how much of that land is gonna be used for storage?
None of this land here, because that's on the tree.
I know, but up?
This little spot right here. And this is a concrete drive, and now this is gravelly, and, just wanna show you, so you can see that block.
Do you have a fence back there, Rick, on the back part of your property, on the north?
I do not have a fence on the north side. I, my intention was to go ahead and take those trees out and eventually build a fence there on the north side, but I never did. I just left the trees.
So will there be anything around these porta potties stored back there, or would, there would not be a fence around them?
On the north side, we will build a fence around the porta potties. There will be a cyclone fence around them, on the north side.
But you don't intend to put up a sight screening fence? You're gonna just do a cyclone fence?
In the cyclone fence, if you've noticed any of them, you can take, I don't know exactly what they call it, but it's sight blinding material?
Right.
That you can put down through?
Right.
Cyclone fence, and it stays really, really well. I've seen several?
Is that what you intend to do?
Places, yeah. My intention is to do that, especially on the north side.
Yeah.
I don't think there's any need to do it on any of the other sides, but, especially on the north side, but with the tree buffer, anywhere from fifty foot of trees to a hundred foot of trees, and then the sight blinding material on the north side, I don't think it would bother anybody.
Because those are pretty high-dollar homes there, just to the north of that, in most cases. We wouldn't want to have an adverse effect to their property.
No, not at all. We, you know, and if, I don't think there will be. I drove the road myself, and I've looked from the road where the houses are, and I can't see them from the road. Now, they may be able to see corner or something of them from their backyard, because I didn't go in any of their yards and look around.
Well, in the fall, when the trees lose, lose their foliage and stuff, I, I think it would be important that we have that sight screen.
I really think the only foliage that you're gonna lose is very, very little, because they're them ugly cedars that we all dislike, and they're green all year round.
Correct. What about the front of the property? Where they're gonna store the new ones? People driving down I forty, you don't think that'll hurt your business, or hurt the image of Yukon?
You know, I don't think so. If somebody didn't like it for some reason, I mean, and could tell me a reason that it would hurt my business or anything, I'd, I'd sure take a look at it. But I think you guys probably know me and my business well enough to know that if the porta potties smelled any at all, I couldn't have them there. If they didn't stack up good in the corner, I couldn't have them there. You won't find very many of them out there now, because they're all out getting ready for the State Fair of Oklahoma and those type things.
Is that where you park your trailers?
Yeah, we sure do. We park some trailers in that lot, a few vehicles park in that lot, and we've used it mainly for parking, but we've sold vehicles out of it, and sold trailers out of it before, and just used it for those kind of things.
Any other commissioners have questions? Just jump in here.
How high did you say the fence was in the back?
The fence will be a six-foot fence.
How tall are those things? Are they?
Uh, they're over six foot. You'll be able to see the?
Put up an eight-foot fence, that two extra foot would be enough to cover it.
I would say an eight-foot fence would cover it, should cover it. I haven't measured them to see.
I know, that would cover, eight foot would certainly cover the top of it, and that way, there wouldn't be any homeowners saying?
Well, I also want you guys to know that these porta potties are stored there at the moment. I have a guy renting an office from me. I'll just let you know, he's looking for his own place and everything, so all, everything that he has is movable. It probably won't stay there for any long period of time. I wished it would, because he's having to pay me rent for that, but I expect him to buy his own place and everything, because he's even showed me a place he's looking at now.
I don't know, what do y'all think about the north side, or, I mean, the south side, next to I forty? Any of that, are you having that, and it, I don't think people would see it.
I think it's appropriate to that type of property, and I think part, part of it is a?
State highway.
Part of, yeah, um, part of the use and appeal is the advertising value from traffic on that interstate.
That's, that's why he wanted to?
And they're out there now, aren't they?
Yeah, they're out there now, and people see them, and, uh?
I think it's probably appropriate for that type of property.
Another thing, on a conditional use permit, and I know you guys know this, if you were to approve it, and it didn't go okay, I think it comes up within another year. I mean, you have to approve it again another year, probably, or something, so.
Well, Rick, I certainly have faith in you that you, in your position that you've attained here in the city in a short amount of time, you wouldn't wanna do anything to hurt anybody in the city, any homeowner?
Absolutely not. My whole idea of being a part of Yukon is for Yukon to prosper and grow and be blessed, and I don't wanna do anything myself that would hurt that. And if I thought this would hurt it, I sure wouldn't be here tonight. But at the same time, I'm open, if something is not kosher, I would sure be open to anything, any comments you had, or anything of that nature, because I want it to work well for me, but also for the city of Yukon. It's not something that's gonna be there for a long period of time, though. I know that for sure.
Well, the only thing I would say is I would prefer an eight-foot fence back there, personally, and if, if he's gonna move it, let, you know, sell it to him with, let him pay for it, you know? That extra two feet can't, can't be that much money.
I wouldn't think so.
Is there any other questions from the commissioners? Are we ready? Questions? Okay, I'll accept a motion on this then.
Mr. Chairman, in the case of the application for a conditional use permit submitted by Five Star Storage, we've read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing, find ourselves in agreement with the staff findings, including all attachments cited in the staff reports. I move this item be recommended for approval to the city council with the following conditions. Condition number one, sight proof screening be installed around the proposed overflow area north of the existing facility. Adjacent to the residentially zoned area. Said screening shall be a minimum of eight feet in height and be installed in accordance with all appropriate City of Yukon requirements. Condition number two, appropriate access be designed and installed to the north overflow area. Said access, as well as area itself, shall be covered such that the dust will be controlled when product is being taken from or stored within the area. Appropriate treatment shall be discussed with and approved by the Community Development Director or other appropriate entity as determined by the Community Development Director.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so we are leaving out the area to the west side of the facility for store, for our screening, and, call and roll, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you, Rick.
Thank you, gentlemen and ladies.
Item six is consider a lot split for Harry Taylor being out Block E, Yukon Lots A-nine and A twenty, Block E, located at four thirty Poplar Avenue. And just for everybody's sake, I am not related to this gentleman.
That's what you said last time.
That's what I said last time.
You still not gonna claim me?
This is beginning to look real familiar. Okay, sir, go ahead.
As y'all know, I came before you when we rezoned that property from agriculture to residential, and as far as I know, I've met all the requirements for the split. The designated square footage is there. There's a sixty-foot frontage, which is required by the city, and I just wanna downsize and eliminate some of my lawn moving, and we're gonna construct a single development house back there, for a single, single family. And that is the purpose of it, and I've already, already constructed a new fence back there. I'm sure you all drive down Holly, and you've probably seen it. So, that's, that's my proposal.
As I remember, last time, there was some, something with the neighbor?
No, that's, you know, there's, it's not anything that's gonna be any problem. We discussed that in the council meeting, and it's a sewer line. I gave her permission to run her sewer line straight across her backyard, under my fence, to connect to the city sewer line, which runs through my backyard, and it's deep enough, it's not gonna hinder anybody building a house back there, because they won't go four-and-a-half foot deep with a foundation. They just have to be sure not to build a cellar or swimming pool.
But the house will be on top of her sewer line?
Well, not particularly. It depends on how far back they go.
What they build?
There's a possibility it could, but in the event it does, there's plenty of room to go around the back of the house that is built there?
Oh, with the sewer line?
To tie into the sewer.
Right, that sewer line's there at, at your, your pleasure, and you're doing her a favor with that. If that has to be moved a little bit, then that's no, not a big problem.
No.
Okay, any other questions from the commissioners? Do we have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, in the case of the application for a lot split for four thirty Poplar Avenue submitted by Harry Taylor, we have read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with the staff findings, including all legal descriptions cited in the staff report. I move that this item be approved.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion, from anyone, staff or anyone?
I would like to thank Mitchell and Scarlett, and the Planning Commission, and the city council for how pleasant you've been to deal with, and it could be any better. I just wanna let you know.
Thank you. Call and roll, please. Yes.
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 Hey, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item seven is new business. Open discussion. If I have anything they wanna talk about?
Tomorrow night, the eleventh, at Yukon Park, is National Night Out. There'll be hot dogs, games, and lots of activities. Police will be there, with their equipment, usually the state and other people, so, should be an enjoyable time. Come out and meet your neighbors. Starts at seven.
Okay? Did we get that right?
That sounds right.
Sunday, the Air Force Band will be in the city park, and it's a smaller group. It's, it's not a huge group. It's a, actually, it's a kind of a rock and roll group of the Air Force Band. They call them Top Brass, and anything that the, that's in the military bands is always outstanding. And I believe it's at two o'clock on Sunday afternoon. Come bring your lawn chairs, and sit out and enjoy a? It's free, great afternoon of music.
They chose Yukon. Jan said they chose the computers.
Did they? And we had the Navy Band several years ago, and completely packed the auditorium, completely packed, and it was one of the finest musical organizations I have ever heard in my entire life. These people are, they audition to be in these bands, and they're quite, quite something to see. Also, like for us tomorrow, nine eleven, keep those folks and what happened in oh-one in our thoughts and prayers. It's still a pretty raw situation. It's still a pretty raw situation to a lot of families there in New York City and around the country. Any other discussion? Y'all, staff, have anything? Senator, counselor? Any others? Clear this meeting closed. Next meeting's October the eighth.